I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dinkert.
Mayor Steam.
Present.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Present.
Councilmember Jordal.
Present.
Hagan.
Present.
Carolyn.
Present.
Enright.
Present.
King.
Present.
Austin.
Present.
We have a court, your honor.
Item number one is a motion for adoption of the agenda. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Item number two is a motion for approving council minutes from December 5th, 2016, and truth in taxation hearing minutes from December 6th. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Number three, under words and recognitions, we have two retirements tonight. Steve Clark from the Street Department and Larry Dolphin. Steve worked -- I'll let Stephen handle this.
Yeah, Steve Clark worked for the city of Austin for 32 years. Worked that time mainly in the Street Department, worked many different jobs in the Street Department. Toward the end of his career with the city, he was mainly an equipment operator, doing operating equipment for snow removal on days like this past weekend, mortar grader work and things like that. So, we would just like to thank Steve for his 32 years of service with the city.
Thank you. And -- Kim, why don't you remind us a little bit about Larry?
Larry, why are you giggling over there?
Is he gonna do the chicken?
Yes, Larry worked for the nature center for 28 years, and he was our director out there. And his passion for the center has made for a booming spot, as we all know. So, we really thank him for everything he has done and for the educational programs that he started with the kids. And, of course, you get to snow ski and snow shoe, and so it's all fun.
Okay, and we have plaques for both Larry and Steve, and I have a key for the city for them. So, why don't you both come on up here, and you can give your speeches or 10 minutes. Everybody would just like to shake your hand. Larry, take your hat off so we can see all the hair you lost. Look at that.
Larry has to do his chicken dance, though.
Yeah, you gotta do your chicken dance. You gotta -- you can do it back there.
Congratulations and thank you. Congratulations, Larry. Thank you.
Oh, yes. Thanks, Larry. Take this.
Thank you.
Or you can come back and get it. I mean, after you're done shaking hands. How many years was it?
I don't know.
What year did you start?
Actually, I started --
Eighty-four, okay.
Eighty-three, but I was temporary.
It still counts. I caught my time as mayor, and that's real temporary. All right.
That's close enough, too.
You bet.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Did I just say mayor?
You both did.
Only half hour.
You guys doing anything after you retire?
Well, I can't really say I'm tired, but I just don't live in the city.
Larry, you?
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to say thanks to the city council, and Kim, and the park board, and all the supporting cast that have made the nature center what it is. It takes a lot of people to make it work, and I think we got a great replacement and a really wonderful staff out there, and great support from Kim, and so it's -- and I was trying to get into the building yesterday to show Tom Butisoff, the past intern. I don't think this key would work, but I was trying to get in the building just to show Tom, but, you know, Ernie does -- has -- you can't get in there. It's pretty solid, but maybe -- but Luke has given me a key for the other building. So, I will be doing a little volunteering, especially for the youth teaching. This winter, a little bit of the bird stuff and bird banding stuff, and staying with the building projects. So, but, thanks again for all your support, and it really makes a difference at this level, the park board and the friends board, just wonderful, and all the great staff that's connected here. So, thank you.
Well, I want to thank you both. Having worked for the city for 30 years, it's really -- it's just a pleasure, you know, knowing -- I know what people do for the city. I mean, you know, Larry's kind of high-profile in chiefs and stuff, but there's a lot of guys that slug it out for 30 years, and, you know, we have just the best workforce. It just makes me proud when I see these guys working, and I just couldn't be happier with the people we have. I'm, you know, sorry to see you two go, but thank you for your service, for sure.
Definitely.
Okay, number four. We need a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Number five, under public hearings. Public hearing and a five-year capital improvement plan. Tom?
Before you tonight is the culmination of meetings with staff, department heads, and the council for a capital improvement plan for the years 2017 through 2021. In total, just over $102 million is being requested to be funded towards these projects. But again, the projects are heavily dependent on the funding available, so if a grant is needed to fund a project, and the grant doesn't come through, the project doesn't go through. The document that's in front of you has been reviewed at different meetings. For 2017, the portion that's allocated for capital is about 20 -- just under $27.7 million. Council, if you have any specific questions on any of the projects, I can certainly try to answer that.
Counsel, any questions? This is a public hearing, so if anybody in the audience has any questions, future council members, even the press, I mean, if anybody has any questions, feel free. I'm not Donald Trump. You guys can ask any questions you want. Okay.
So, what this will do, mayor, is then set in process the 2017 requests, and then 18 through 21 are just kind of placeholders for staff to evaluate as the future CIPs come forward.
Okay. So, if there's no questions, we're ready for the resolution?
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
Okay, Tom, six is approving the tax levy, and seven is the budget. Why don't you explain them both at the same time? Would that be easier?
Sure.
And then we'll go through them one at a time when you're done.
As was discussed at the December 6th truth in taxation hearing, was a proposed tax levy for the 2017 year and the proposed budget for those years -- for that year. In total, the 2017 proposed tax levy is $5,341,000, spread out between the general fund, library, debt service, port authority, and capital improvements. So, these are the dollar amounts that will be spread amongst all the taxable property within the city of Austin, for which citizens got their truth in taxation statements back
Aye.
King.
the end of November for.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Second resolution is the proposed budget for 2016 -- I'm sorry, for 2017.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
Number seven is a resolution authorizing cancellation -- oh, number eight.
That's $31,252,900.
Is a resolution authorizing the cancellation of certain ad valorem tax levies?
And again, we had a public discussion, as required by state law, on December 6th to
Tom?
Council has two outstanding bond issues for which resolutions exist, allowing us go over some of the specific areas where that budget is being spent in 2017. to levy a tax to make payments for the outstanding debt. Again, if council approves these two items as drafted, that's what will again be transmitted One is utility revenue bonds of 2010A in the amount of about $247,000, and the other to the county and the state to be spread amongst all the property, the tax levy of one is the capital improvement bonds of 2015A, which utilities use to build their facility, $5,341,000. And then the $31 million budget will then set in motion for department heads to actually at $1,280,751. start planning for the 2017 year and lining up acquisitions. Since there are other revenue sources in place to make those payments, we need to cancel
Is that it?
Yes, sir. the taxes such that the county does not add them to the tax rolls and to the property
Questions? First, we'll take six. Anything on the levy? Any questions?
tax system.
If not, we need a resolution?
Again, there's an alternate source of revenue to make payments on these, so we don't need
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
the tax levy to do it, like we are authorized to do if worst-case scenario comes true.
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Counsel, any questions?
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
If not, we need a resolution for number eight.
Aye.
Enright.
So move the resolution.
Aye.
Is there a second?
King.
Second.
Aye.
Mr. Dinkert.
Austin. Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson. Hagan.
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor. Carolyn.
Number seven is resolution adopting the budget for 2017.
Aye.
Enright.
If there's no questions, we need a resolution?
Aye.
So move.
King.
Second.
Aye.
Mr. Dinkert.
Austin. Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor. Hagan.
Thank you.
Aye.
Number nine is a resolution granting 2017 licenses for sale.
Carolyn.
Hard liquor on sale, Sunday hard liquor on sale, Sunday wine on sale, and 3-2 beer on
Aye.
and off sale. Ms. Casel?
Yes, the list before you has the -- the resolution has all of the business owners in Austin that have paid their license fee, have their insurance, and all the other requirements for their liquor licenses. So, we would request that you pass this resolution, and it will go on to the state for their 2017 licenses.
Any questions? If not, we need a resolution?
So move.
Second. Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero with one abstaining, your honor.
Thank you. Ten is a resolution approving an agreement with MINDOT for the 11th Drive Northeast Bridge Project. Mr. Lang?
Yes, as we discussed at the previous work session, this agreement details the items with MINDOT that we have requested as part of the 11th Drive Bridge Replacement Project by the new QuickTrip. Some of those items include the 50% of the cost for widening the sidewalk to a 10-foot wide sidewalk or trail area, some aesthetics, some landscaping, and then also bike trail extension sidewalk approach to connect it into our existing bike trail. These costs come to a total of $127,993.87. Funding for this project, we have received a grant from the Hormel Foundation through a request from the Vision 2020 Wayfinding Group to fund these costs, and we would recommend approving this agreement.
Counsel, anything? If not, we need a resolution for ten.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
Thank you. Ten is a resolution approving an agreement with MINDOT for the 11th Drive Northeast Bridge Project. Mr. Lang?
Yes, as we discussed at the previous work session, this agreement details the items with MINDOT that we have requested as part of the 11th Drive Bridge Replacement Project by the new QuickTrip. Some of those items include the 50% of the cost for widening the sidewalk to a 10-foot wide sidewalk or trail area, some aesthetics, some landscaping, and then also bike trail extension sidewalk approach to connect it into our existing bike trail. These costs come to a total of $127,993.87. Funding for this project, we have received a grant from the Hormel Foundation through a request from the Vision 2020 Wayfinding Group to fund these costs, and we would recommend approving this agreement.
Counsel, anything? If not, we need a resolution for ten.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
Thank you. Eleven is a resolution approving a one watershed-one plan agreement with the Cedar River Watershed District. Mr. Lang?
Justin Hanson spoke to the council at a previous work session. Justin is with the Soil and Water Conservation District, but also representing the Cedar River Watershed District, talking about the benefits of this one watershed-one plan concept where instead of having -- so there are four counties that make up the Cedar River Watershed District. Those counties are Moore, Freeborn, Steele, and Dodge. And each of those four different counties have separate water plans. Giving you an example, like Dodge County, only a small portion of the Cedar River Watershed goes into Dodge County. Dodge County's water plan may not prioritize a project in that small portion of the Cedar River Watershed. They may have priorities elsewhere. By creating a one watershed-one plan that allows the watershed to rank their projects, and this one project that's up in Dodge County may actually rank very high for the watershed. So, these -- using this one watershed-one-plan boundary will help to facilitate projects that are best for the watershed, as opposed to breaking them down on a county-by-county basis.
Counsel, we need a resolution. Let's have a question.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
Thank you. Twelve is a resolution approving a Mighty Ducks Grant Agreement. Mr. Lang?
Earlier this fall, we applied for and received a $60,000 Mighty Ducks Grant to go for air quality improvements at Riverside Arena. That will be done with the purchase of a new ice resurfacer. The total cost of the ice resurfacer is about $145,000, and we'll utilize the $60,000 grant to put money towards this equipment acquisition. Dollars will be reimbursed from the state, and the grant expires June 30th of 2017. We'd request approval of the grant.
Counsel, anything? If not, we need a resolution for twelve.
So move.
Second. Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
Thank you. Thirteen is a resolution approving an airport farm lease agreement with VS Family Farms LLC. Mr. Lang?
We've been working with Scott Family Farms, now VS Family Farms, for many years regarding property maintenance around the Austin Municipal Airport. And this agreement in front of you tonight is another two-year extension with the same farm family, with different rates for land inside the airport fence and also tillable acres outside of the airport fence. We have it broken down, as shown on your handout. In addition to these properties, the VS Farms also mows hay or grass at our Port Authority property located across from the new QuickTrip. That property, we do not have an established rate on that because it's really more of a maintenance item. The amount of value that they get out of the hay on that site really offsets the input costs. So, it's more of a maintenance thing, keeping the wheezes down for us, as opposed to really making a profit off of it. So, based on that, we have established these rates for 2017, 2018, and we would recommend approving a contract with VS Farms for those years and those rates.
Counsel?
I was just wondering why we've lowered the rate for productive 31 acres?
It's based on farm costs as rates. We have a -- we keep a shorter two-year agreement with them, and we adjust the rates based on input costs and commodity rates.
Anybody else? If not, we need a resolution?
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
Thank you. Fourteen is a resolution accepting donations to the city of Austin. Self-explanatory, need a resolution?
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Mr. Dinkert?
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
Thank you. Fifteen is a resolution approving 2017 through 2019 wage increases for non-union, non-exempt personnel.
Trish? Good evening, mayor and council. I'm going to address the fifteen and sixteen together. These resolutions are resolutions that typically come before you every three years and represent a cost of living adjustment for the non-contract individuals. The three years represents the typical same length as negotiated labor agreements. So, fifteen is for non-union, non-exempt personnel, and that group of employees typically does receive the same negotiated rates as the labor agreements that we have in place at the time. So, those individuals are listed there, and at least in my time here at the city, that's been the case. And then for resolution sixteen, that's for non-union exempt personnel. Three of those exempt personnel have separate employment agreements with the city. That'd be the city attorney, city administrator, and director of administrative services. So, again, the annual or typical cost of living adjustments that you see here are typically the same rate as negotiated contracts. There are provisions in at least the director of administrative services contract that allows for additional bonus or increases based on performance, and that can go -- be awarded up till March 1st of the following year for that year of performance. So, before you is those two resolutions.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay.
For these two, I'm going to stay up here because I have the next ones, too.
All right. Any questions? I mean, these are -- why don't you explain who it is, just for the record? Who's -- which one is which?
Okay, sure, sure. The non-union, non-exempt indicate or represent the city clerk position, and then the engineering, the park and recreation, and the police department administrative assistants. And then the non-union exempt represent the city administrator, the city attorney, and director of administrative services, and those three do have a separate employment agreement. And then it also represents the human resource director, the IT or the MIS administrator, the police captain, and the police chief.
And these follow the increases that the rest of the city has personnel ups out of the four?
Yes, they do.
Okay. So, anybody have questions on fifteen or sixteen? If not, we need a resolution for item fifteen.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
Thank you. Now, we need a resolution for sixteen. I'm assuming there's no questions?
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert?
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, your honor.
Thank you. Twenty-one is a resolution adopting the comprehensive plan. Ms. Wallace?
Yes, your honor. We've been working on this project since about 2014. It started with the downtown master plan, and then we also looked at our citywide comprehensive land use plan, which was dated 2000, and also needed to be updated. The comprehensive plan should provide, I listed eight items in your materials, basically continuity and land use decisions, balancing interests of different private interests, protecting public investments, providing a legal basis for regulatory decisions. And in that process, we did an RFP, asked for proposals for various consultants. We chose Short, Elliott, and Hendrickson, S.H. We have here tonight Bob Coste, who led the team of consultants that worked with us on developing the comprehensive plan, and I will let him give you a presentation on that.
Good evening, mayor and council staff. Thank you. So, we started this project about a year ago on the comprehensive plan and got a lot of help from a lot of folks, including Janet, who is on our committee. I'll just quickly share the table of contents with you, so you understand the scope of the plan. The first chapter goes through the existing conditions, but it also is where I'll probably focus most of my attention, which is on the community input and engagement process that we used for building the plan. That was called Austin Today, if you will. Then the second piece of the plan, section two, about the community's vision for the future, addresses land use, housing, transportation, economic development, community facilities and utilities, parks and open space, and intergovernmental cooperation. Then the final chapter, section three, achieving the vision, focuses on implementation and So, we built the plan, starting last year, with a committee structure, actually with two committees. One, we had a technical committee, and then we had a citizens committee. So, we met with those folks every month for the last 11 months and reviewed all of the past documents related to your previous planning efforts, and then built a series of public engagement options and ideas and input sessions, which led us to this vision, the vision statement, which is really kind of the foundation of the plan. Austin, Minnesota is a diverse and welcoming community, providing a full range of employment and housing options within attractive walkable districts and neighborhoods, well-maintained parks, natural areas, convenient shopping, a vibrant mixed-use downtown offering multi-generational arts, cultural and entertainment activities connected by a safe and accessible multimodal transportation network.
a month, um, some additional wording for the Affordable Care Act, and, um, a change to the opt-out. Those changes in that labor agreement are consistent with all, um, labor agreements that we've settled for 2017 beyond.
Counsel? Need a resolution.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
20 is a resolution approving hearing officer agreements for contested administrative citations. Holly?
Uh, Your Honor and councilmembers, we have, uh, adopted administrative citation ordinance, and in the event someone is cited for violating a city ordinance, they are, um, allowed to have a civil proceeding in which we would be required to have a hearing officer decide over that, that hearing. Um, we have a list of four agreements, um, that cover eight attorneys who are interested in providing those services to the city. The agreements are attached, um, they would be providing, um, all of the paperwork and all of the, the hearing services, um, that we would require, um, they would be, um, receiving a hundred dollars an hour for that service, and, um, they would, uh, um, they may terminate the agreement on, with 30 days' notice, and if the council has any questions about, um, that agreement, or any of the process that would be involved, um, let me know.
If there are no questions, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 21 is the resolution adopting the comprehensive plan. Ms. Wallace?
Uh, yes, Your Honor, we've been working on this project since about 2014. It started with the downtown master plan, and then we also looked at our citywide comprehensive land use plan, which was dated 2000, and also needed to be updated. Um, the comprehensive plan should provide, I listed eight items in your materials, um, basically continuity and land use decisions, balancing interests of different private interests, protecting public investments, um, providing a legal basis for regulatory decisions. And in that process, we did a, an RFP, asked for proposals for various consultants. We, um, chose Short Elliott Hendrickson, S.H. We have here tonight Bob Coste, who led the, uh, team of consultants that worked with us on developing the comprehensive plan, and I will let him, um, give you a presentation on that.
Good evening, Mayor and council staff. Thank you. So, we started this project about a year ago on the comprehensive plan, and, um, got a lot of help from a lot of folks, including Janet, um, who is on our committee. I'll just quickly, um, share the table of contents with you, so you understand the scope of the, of the plan. The first chapter goes through the existing conditions, but it also, um, is where I'll probably focus most of my, my attention, which is on the community input and engagement process that we, uh, used for building the plan. That was called Austin Today, if you will. Then the second piece of the plan, section two, about the community's vision for the future, addresses land use, housing, transportation, economic development, community facilities and utilities, parks and open space, and intergovernmental cooperation. Then the final chapter, um, section three, achieving the vision, focuses on implement, excuse me, implementation and action steps. So we built the plan, um, starting last year with, with a committee structure, uh, actually with two committees. One, we had a technical committee, and then we had a citizens', uh, committee. So we met with those folks every month for the last 11 months, and, um, reviewed all of the past documents related to your previous planning efforts, and, um, then built a series of public engagement options and ideas and input sessions, which led us to this vision, the vision statement, um, which is really kind of the foundation of the plan. Austin, Minnesota is a diverse and welcoming community, providing a full range of employment and housing options within attractive walkable districts and neighborhoods, well-maintained parks, natural areas, convenient shopping, a vibrant mixed-use downtown, offering multi-generational arts, cultural and entertainment activities, connected by a safe and accessible multimodal transportation network. So it's a lot of stuff in there, but it really tries to capture the aspiration, I think, of, of the community and all the folks that we heard from over the last year. So get a little bit about what we did in terms of building this plan. We started out with, uh, this, these two committees, as I mentioned, that worked quite closely together. We launched a community survey, which ran for about six weeks. That survey asked a series of questions. The answers or the responses to that survey are attached as an appendix, but that really helped create a foundation of getting people to understand what the plan, that the planning effort was happening. We got over 200, um, people to take that, you know, participate in that survey, both online, as well as folks with differences in language, who filled out the survey at the welcome center with some assistance. So those, uh, paper surveys were then coded in. So 212 responses is, is what that worked into. We then followed up with two issues and opportunities, uh, workshops, where about 45 people participated last winter. This was, uh, sort of a afternoon, a morning session at about 7:30. We met over at the Art Center, um, and marked up maps and talked with people about what they had in terms of issues in the community, what they wanted to see changed, what they wanted to make sure we protected and preserved. Um, we followed up that afternoon with another session over at the Community College, and again, marking up maps, talking to people, getting input. That was then followed by a series of two focus groups. Those focus groups were, um, built around, uh, ad hoc committees that the, the city has. So one was on sustainability and resiliency. Our project partners for this project were Maxfield Research, the same firm that the city had used to build your, uh, housing study a few years ago. So they updated their demographic and housing numbers to go into the study. The other firm that helped us is a nonprofit called the, uh, Great Plains Institute. Those folks focused mostly on sustainability and resiliency issues. They've been working with the Green Step Cities Program, which the city of Austin is a participant in. So Brian and Abby and those folks from Great Plains helped us run those, uh, focus groups. We spent about an hour and a half with the Sustainability Committee, and really asked a lot of questions and got a lot of good input. Um, and then we also spent time with, on housing, with the Housing Subcommittee. Talked with some builders, some finance folks, uh, your EDA Director, and had a really, you know, in-depth, robust discussion about housing issues, both in terms of why new housing hasn't, um, really taken off since the, you know, Great Recession has ended, um, what issues, you know, uh, low-income people face within your community in terms of finding quality housing, um, and pretty much that whole gamut of, uh, you know, from entry level into the housing market into, you know, uh, move-up and upper-level housing. So that information helped us build our goals and policies for the project. We also then, through a small grant, uh, that the Great Plains Institute helped the city get, ran a second survey of non-English speaking members of your community. We had 54 responses there, asking them about housing options, uh, transportation issues, childcare, just, you know, really kind of getting into the weeds with folks, uh, about their lives in Austin. Throughout the whole project, we've kept a project website, where anybody could access the documents, um, after every meeting. We ran, uh, a series of meeting summaries and posted those, um, took questions, uh, we had a couple of land use planning sessions with Austin High School students, which was really quite fun. That was where we went and spent, uh, an afternoon in the civics class of, uh, two teachers at, at your high school, and worked with the students, uh, teaching them a little bit about land use planning, and having them get their hands on a series of land use planning cards, and they really kind of created new cities, and looked at how they might plan different neighborhoods, and, you know, really got them kind of engaged in the comprehensive plan, both in a focus for us to get input from folks who generally don't participate in your planning processes, but also, um, maybe hopefully we sparked a couple people's interest to, you know, wanna be more civically minded in the future. So, um, that helped guide the plan. We did a bus tour with the, uh, community advisory committee and the technical committee, driving around the city, looking at various places, discussing options and ideas for change or for preservation. Then all of that went into building the plan. The draft plan was then, um, put out in a, um, open house at the Hormel Nature Center about a month and a half ago, where we had a number of people come in and visit and talk and give us comments. That information then went into also updating the plan, um, draft, and then last month, we met with your plan commission, um, talked to them, got a few more comments. The draft that you have in front of you tonight has that information built into it. Planning Director has given you a copy of a table that kind of compares your previous comprehensive plan with your new comprehensive plan. So, um, rather than keep going on and on, I'll just ask if there are any questions about the differences between the two documents, what's kind of been updated, or anybody have any comments or questions about what you've seen in the, in the draft plan?
Council?
Bob, I just wonder if you could comment briefly on, um, you know, as a fresh eyes on the situation, so to speak, about some of the, um, some of the surprises or, and some of the, um, directions that, that you, uh, I, I know that that's all in here, but just for the general group.
Okay. Sure. Well, I guess I will say, having participated in your downtown planning process, and now in your comprehensive plan, um, and getting to know the city of Austin, uh, our firm has been here a long time, um, we're, uh, we love this city, uh, I've gotten to know a lot of people here, and it's been very rewarding as a planner to work with, and, what I'll call an intergenerational, uh, sort of group of folks, from young folks to older folks, uh, people who are from all walks of life, who care deeply about your community, about this community, and it's really kind of rewarding as a planner to, uh, talk with folks and really see who's, uh, how intelligent and how purposeful people are about, and passionate they are about their city, and about wanting to put the city of Austin on a firm footing. So that's really nice to see. There are some, what I'll call, uh, pretty good or almost progressive ideas in here about land use planning, which I think is really important for, for any city, but especially for smaller communities that, um, really, uh, rely on yourselves and your sort of neighbors to, to make sure things happen. You don't have a giant planning organization like the Metropolitan Council looking out for you, or telling you what to do. So it's really, how, it was, uh, it, I think it's great that we've got a lot of good policy in here, um, that I would say addresses needs and issues that are current today. When we look at the past plan, um, which set you on a good course, some of those same issues that you were addressing, um, in 2000, you're continuing to address, and I think you're gonna always have to address them. Urban planning is, is kind of like farming, you know, it's, we call it urban husbandry. You're just, every day, you have to keep working at things, right? You have to milk the cows, you've gotta do the land use planning, you've gotta update the zoning ordinance, um, you continually have a very dynamic market, um, so your, your retail issues here related to your leakage, um, uh, you know, having things, uh, having to go out of the community to do your, a lot of your shopping, um, that was news to me, and to see that, you know, you had a Target store walk out, um, but at the same time had a new Walmart come in, and now the new Hy-Vee. So I think everyone got hurt in the 2008 Great Recession, but it looks to us like Austin is really kind of on their way back. And I think one of your key, uh, issues that you have, that the plan tries to address, is this sort of, uh, what I would say nexus between living wage jobs and housing, and housing equality. And being a small community, it's difficult to get the private marketplace to come in and do the things that we all know that need to be done here in terms of bettering your housing stock. So it was also really rewarding and, and exciting to see the conversations we had with EDA and with others in the community about wanting to be very proactive, and you currently are being proactive about addressing blight, about addressing, uh, lack of affordable housing that's of a high quality, and also about the need for move-up housing, uh, so you can attract those younger or, uh, sort of more, uh, what I would say higher-paying jobs, folks that are at your industries and at your, uh, other, uh, other sort of job, like, what we'd say?
Employers.
Employers, excuse me. Especially in finance, education, healthcare. Those are all producing some good-paying jobs, uh, even those folks are having difficult time finding, you know, good move-up housing. So those conversations were, were good to have, and the policies that we've built into the plan, I think, address, uh, and give you a firm footing as a community for being proactive to, to see those things, uh, improve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it?
That's it for me?
Excellent report, thank you.
Okay.
We're glad you're as high on Austin as we are. So with that...
Do we, do we adopt this?
Hmm?
Do we adopt?
Yeah, we need a resolution to adopt the comprehensive plan.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Okay. Number 21 is one single motion following the appointments, 22. 22 motion. Approving of... Does anybody want me to go through these? You can read them. I will say, we have excellent boards and commissions. We take a lot of time and a lot of thought in, in these appointments. Most of them are reappointments, some of them are new. There's no way we could thank the people on these boards and commissions enough. One of the reasons that we get good reports is because we have good people on our boards, and we're gonna maintain that and keep good people, and these are all good people. If they weren't good people, they wouldn't be reappointed or appointed the first time. Ms. Cazell?
Yes, I just had one change, um, gone by from the library door, would not be renewed. So, um, could you remove that particular person from the library door?
Okay, and I do have a reappointment for that already, but that had, they haven't turned in their application.
Right, so if we could just make the motion with that, for that point.
Okay, so with that deletion, does anybody have any questions? If not, we need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posen, thank you. 23 is a resolution setting the mileage reimbursement rate for 2017. Mr. Dankert.
The IRS has come over, um, the annual updated mileage reimbursement rate for 2017 has dropped to half a cent from 52 cents per mile to 53.5 cents per mile, and that should be effective beginning of the first 17. Um, the past council has adopted the federal reimbursement rate for reimbursement of those employees in travel, um, for city purposes using their own vehicle, and request approval except...
Is that a reflection of the gas prices? Okay. Counsel, anything? If not, we need a resolution for 23.
Second.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 24 is a resolution approving an amendment to the conditional purchase agreement with Austin Utilities. Mr. Clark.
Mayor members, uh, you might recall on June 6th, 2016, council adopted a conditional purchase agreement with Austin Utilities. Within that agreement, it had, uh, the items had, the conditions had to be completed by December 31st of 2016, with that date quickly approaching. It's necessary to, uh, extend that, and before you tonight is an extension of that to June 30th, 2016. Council action is requested to approve the amendment to the conditional purchase agreement as provided in Exhibit 2.
Questions?
So that's the only change, is just extending the date?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Any more questions? If not, we need a resolution for 24.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second? Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal. Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passed at 7:00.
Okay. 25 is a resolution declaring the property located at 611 First Avenue Northwest a hazard of structure. We need a resolution.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Counselmember Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passed at 7:00.
Thank you. 26 is a series of three motions granting the Planning and Zoning Department the authorization to remove junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following locations. A, 801 10th Street Northeast to Hernandez' property.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? B, 614 13th Street Northeast, North Star Homes of America property. Need a motion?
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? C, 504 5th Street Northwest, HPMN1 LLC property. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have a quick question here. Holly, it seems like we do Hernandez' property almost every time. It's, this the same owner, or is it just different people with the same name, or, I mean, this guy should be just about strung up by now if this is the same person. Oh, really? I mean, it seems like we do an awful lot with this name on it.
You know, I'm not, I can't say for sure.
Can we check on that? Can we?
I'll check on it.
I mean, that, yeah, just, whenever you get time. It just seems like we do a lot, an awful lot of Hernandez', I don't think there's that many in town. Okay. Citizens addressing the council. Anybody here that wants to address the council tonight? Last meeting of the year? Nope? Then we need reports and recommendations. We'll start with, we'll start with Jeremy tonight, since it's the last meeting.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to thank the citizens, council, and city staff for the last four years being able to serve on city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Nothing, Your Honor.
I'd like to thank everyone I've worked with over the past four years on the city. It's been a lot of fun meeting new people, and also thank all the citizens that have supported me and have contacted me for things over the past four years too, and appreciate it.
Thank you. Janet?
I just want to thank both Jeremy and Michael for being excellent colleagues on city council. Thank you, Jeremy.
Okay.
Yes, I'd just like to thank Michael and Jeremy for their service, and it's been a pleasure working with you both the last four years, and encourage you both to stay involved and active. Thank you.
Steve?
Ditto to those comments. Thanks for your service, and best of luck down the road.
Judy?
Ditto again. Yeah, it's been nice working with you, and I hope to work with you on other things.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and I'd like to thank both members too for the time spent discussing items and bringing different views forward, so appreciate your engagement with us in the process.
Any reports?
I don't have any, and I don't know of any staff reports either.
Okay, Jason, get rid of your camera, because I'm going to give them keys, so I want that sent to paper tomorrow, okay? They deserve it. I would like to thank both Jeremy and Mike also. We didn't always agree on everything, but that's the nature of the game, and that, you don't want people that agree with everything. In my years, I've seen many people, not many, but a lot of people come on the council, get off the council, come on the council, so don't give up. I mean, you know, you can take your knowledge and bring it back to us in two or four years, whatever the case may be. I've enjoyed your time, both of you, and as soon as Jason is ready, I'll give you each a key, because I'm not sure that, I think you're both going out tonight, but I wasn't sure, and I'd rather do it as long as we can get a little publicity for you, so why don't we just get them both with one shot, then we can... Tom? We're going to have to take pictures then, okay?
One bullet.
You could almost hit the rest of the... Got it? Okay, with that, we need a motion to adjourn until Tuesday, January 3, 2017.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nobody's going to be... Have a nice trip?
Nice day.
All right, we'll see you guys at...